Good evening. I call to order this meeting of the regularly scheduled meeting of the Bristol, Virginia City Council this evening, September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Please join us for a moment of silence. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
... which is standing, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We'll go ahead and get started as we work out technical issues. Let the record show, Councilwoman Becky Knave is calling in on the phone. Councilman Kevin Wingard is unavailable this evening. The first item, we'll jump into Mayor's Minute, Council comments. Any comments from the council?
I will just say very briefly, so I serve on board Rhythm and Roots. At the Rhythm and Roots Festival this previous weekend, I would like to thank all of the organizers for all the hard work they put into it. They took a lot of steps to make sure people were able to stay safe and enjoy the festival in a responsible manner. Increased hand washing stations, sanitizing stations, trying to keep most events outside and not, and to limit the inside activities. So I think it was a very successful festival from everything I've seen. So I'd like to thank the city staff, especially from both cities. One thing I always enjoy doing is after Sunday evening, after Rhythm and Roots is over, driving downtown a couple hours later and seeing it completely spotless and transformed back to a, back to a main street in a small town. So thank you to both city staffs for doing that and thank you everybody who came out and enjoyed it responsibly.
I'll echo what Councilman Osborne said because every year on Monday morning, I usually go downtown and you would not know there was a festival there and that's a tribute to the work of the staff of both cities and the hard work they do over the weekend. I'd also like to mention that with the flooding in Hurley the past couple of weeks, that the technical rescue team from the fire department went up there and assisted and really appreciate what they do. They're an asset, not just for our community, but really for our region, to have somebody like that here that can respond in a time of need. So I appreciate the work they do as well.
City manager comments?
Yeah, just probably a few long-winded comments for tonight. First, I do want to thank our city staff over the weekend. They began working on Rhythm and Roots Thursday night, worked well into Friday morning, and then they did that all weekend to make sure that Rhythm and Roots and the attendees of Rhythm and Roots had a pleasant event. From my perception, while I was downtown this weekend, everything seemed to go off without a hitch. Our staff did an amazing job to make sure that the streets were clean first thing Monday morning. I drove down Monday morning and it was as if no one was ever downtown and they did an absolute amazing job, along with our fire and police, making sure people stayed safe and getting people help when they needed help. Next, I'd like to recognize Casey Barnes and the junior golf team. They, Casey has a team of young people that, from all across northeast Tennessee and southwest Virginia, they participate in golf tournaments on a local, state, and regional basis. And this past Sunday, they won the region championship, which qualifies them to be one of eight teams to go to the national championship, which will be televised on ESPN the weekend of October the eighth. So there'll be ninety-six kids participating nationally and we have eight of those children right here from our own backyard, participating at the national level. So that's a tremendous accomplishment for Casey and that team and we should recognize them. Finally, yesterday, we put out a press release that attendance inside city council meetings would be limited. That includes IDA meetings and planning commission meetings. And for a brief history, I think it's important for the public to be reminded from where we were in regards to COVID-19 to where we are now. So on May the nineteenth, as people began getting vaccinated, we saw a positivity rate in our region of six percent. Seventy people were in the hospital, nineteen of those were in ICU, and ten of those nineteen were on a ventilator. A little over a month later, on June the twenty-third, our positivity rate had dropped to three percent. People in our community felt that we were beating COVID-19 and things were on an upswing. We only had thirty-three patients in the hospital, seven in the ICU, and five on a ventilator. Little over a month later, on July twenty-eighth, our positivity rate had increased to twelve point four percent. Forty-six patients were in the hospital as compared to thirty-three previously. Twelve were in ICU and five were on a ventilator. Fast forward thirteen days to August the ninth, sixteen point four percent positivity rate. A hundred and forty-four people in the hospital as compared to forty-six just thirteen days earlier. Forty-four people were in ICU compared to twelve and twenty-two of those forty-four were on a ventilator. So fifty percent of the people were on a ventilator at this time. Ten days later, our positivity rate had increased from, or was it sixteen percent? Two hundred and nineteen people were in the hospital as compared to a hundred and forty-four. Sixty-three were in ICU and forty-four were on a ventilator. And that's roughly seventy percent of the people on a ventilator. On August the thirty-first, just roughly two weeks later, positivity rate had increased to nineteen point nine percent. Three hundred and thirteen people were in the hospital as compared to two hundred and nineteen people just twelve days before. Seventy-four people were in ICU, fifty-four people were on a ventilator. Once again, little over seventy percent of the people who were in ICU were on a ventilator. September the seventh, positivity rate had increased to twenty-one point four percent. Four hundred and three people in a hospital compared to three hundred and thirteen, eight days previously. Ninety-two people were in ICU compared to seventy-four and sixty-six of those ninety-two were on a ventilator. Once again, roughly seventy percent, maybe a little bit more, on a ventilator. One week, September fourteenth, today's numbers, we are at a twenty-one point nine percent positivity rate. Three hundred and ninety-one people are in the hospital, a hundred and eight in the ICU and eighty-four are on a ventilator. Once again, over a seventy-some percent of the people in ICU are on a ventilator. I made this decision, I did not make this decision lightly, to limit the number of people inside our buildings. Over the past month and a half, we have had city staff impacted with COVID-19. We have more city staff impacted now than we did all of last year. Currently, we do not have a council member here because he is impacted with COVID-19 in such a degree that he has lost close to thirty pounds in a week. This is something, this virus is something that we need to remember is still out there. It does not matter who you are or what you do. It doesn't matter what your economic status is. It makes no difference. It hits anyone at any time and can cause a significant hardship on you and your family. So as we move forward over the next several months, I anticipate these restrictions will remain in place and they may get stricter here at City Hall and across other city facilities if the positivity rate does not decrease and we do not start seeing a trend that would make us feel more comfortable. We have seen numerous news reports of local people who were not vaccinated, who wish they had been vaccinated. And based on the research that I've done, and by no means am I a medical doctor, but I've talked to plenty of medical professionals over the past year and a half as we deal with COVID-19. It appears the one way to curb the positivity rate and hospital admissions rates is to get vaccinated. I know there are a lot of concerns about the vaccinations, but one thing that I do know, we do not have hospitals overflowing with people because they've been vaccinated. Hospitals are overflowing with people who have not been vaccinated. I would encourage anyone who has not been vaccinated to speak with a medical professional about the vaccinations. Make that choice wisely because the choices you make today will not only impact you, but will impact your family and coworkers in the months and years to come. So I hope everyone can recognize the seriousness of COVID-19, recognize that when I make these decisions to restrict attendance at City Hall for events or other matters, it's out of a need for safety for each and every one of you all and for staff. If our staff gets overwhelmed with COVID-19, city operations could be severely impacted and we did not have a severe impact last year. I do not want a severe impact this year and I do not want a severe impact in the future. We're here to serve you and your family and we want to make sure we do that diligently and efficiently as we continue to move through this pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eads. The next item is matters to be presented by members of the public, non-agenda items. We had two folks sign up. For the folks that did sign up, I just wanted to ask, did you want to speak now about a non-agenda item or was it about an agenda item later on?
Non-agenda.
Non-agenda, okay. Well, first person that signed up is Dr. Samuel Weddington.
Thank you for this opportunity. I speak not only for myself, our church community that comprised, is comprised of residents of Bristol, Virginia and Tennessee, and I also speak on behalf of the Bristol Area Ministerial Alliance, which is made up of ministers from Bristol, Virginia and from Bristol, Tennessee. I'm coming here to just talk about the landfill. I know that there are other things related to this. This is just my opinion about this. The landfill at twenty-one twenty-five Sheiksville Road. And before I make my formal request of you, I want to share with you the reality that we on the ground are facing. This past Sunday morning, our worship service included observation of the Lord's table as well as a baptism of a son of a young couple. And as I got out of my car at the church at seven forty-five AM, I was assaulted by the putrid smell of the landfill. It was so bad, it stung my nose, it made my eyes water, it left me nauseous. When I entered the building, the gas had permeated the building and I didn't contact you, sorry. It's Sunday morning and I've got to get ready to go. By the time our first worship service where these things were to take place, that was at nine AM, the gas had not dissipated and everyone who came to church smelled the gas and some congregants would come to complain about headaches, nausea, fatigue, irritation of the eyes, nose, and throat. And again, I could go on, but I just, I ask you to imagine the scene. We had come to worship and partake in the holy sacraments of our church, only to be surrounded by the smell of rot and death. Children in our congregation were exposed to this. The health of anyone who is smelling this is being affected. And expanding our view beyond the considerations of what we experienced on a particular Sunday morning, I believe that the evidence is mounting that the landfill is damaging our community. We have young children developing nosebleeds, anemia, a myriad of other physical ailments. The inability of residents in Bristol, Virginia and Tennessee to enjoy life in their community and their homes, the emotional toll that all of this is taking, is leading me and many in our community to a singular conclusion. And it is this, and it is my request. It is time to suspend the use of the landfill, get whatever reaction is going on under control, whether it's hot wells, smoldering fire, and I like the language of triage, that's where we are, and submit a closure plan to Virginia Department of Environmental Quality that meets their regulation standards as quickly as possible. And I don't know whether you feel that you still have a good chance of controlling the outcome of this scenario, but I ask you to see what many in the community think are, is obvious, and that is that the situation is rapidly growing out of the ability of the city of Bristol to control, this council to control, and delay or alternate scenarios can do ongoing damage to our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dr. Weddington. The, the next person who signed up is Ms. Powers.
Good evening, council and city manager and city officials. It's great to be with y'all this evening. Chad Keen is usually our council representative. He is away this evening on a family obligation and Mayor Latrell is out of town, so you have me. And I would like to also echo Neil's comments about Rhythm and Roots this weekend. We do several things together and we do them well. And this weekend was no exception to that. There was a lot of work. It was, it was, it was a real challenge to come to the decision to have Rhythm and Roots. I serve on the BCM board and a lot of discussion there, so we did it, we did it well, and we hope that everyone will stay safe as, after the fact. Additionally, I wanted to come this evening and to share that this, the landfill situation, while the landfill is in Bristol, Virginia, it is most definitely an issue for Bristol, Tennessee. As Mr. Hawk stated during the exchange of information earlier this evening, it does come right up over the knoll and into the Tennessee Valley that runs out the volunteer parkway. The Bristol, Tennessee City Council does take this very seriously and appreciates all of your efforts and would encourage you to continue to be transparent with the community at large, but especially with our council as we move forward. I know y'all have been in touch with your state legislators, as have we in the respective attorney generals and Department of Health. One thing that we would like to know is what a health assessment through the states or through the federal government could glean as to exactly what it is in our air and to keep the monitor going and to keep communicating with us. It smells so bad, we all know that. When it gets in your mouth, there's the taste of metal, we all know that. It leads all of us to conclude that it must be dangerous to our health and it's so important to be reinforced through these monitorings that we are in a safe environment. So again, we appreciate all of the efforts. We are here to help as we can, but wanted to be sure that everyone understands that in this situation, we are one Bristol dealing with this situation and that we're all looking for a very positive outcome. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is the adoption of our agenda.
I move for the adoption of the agenda as presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Knave?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Farnum?
Item one of our regular agenda, joint proclamation with Bristol, Tennessee to proclaim September nineteenth through twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-one as Child Passenger Safety Week and the day of September twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one as Buckle Up for Life Day. Staff report.
Good evening, council members. My name is Melanie Fleener and I'm the transportation planner for the city of Bristol, Virginia. I have with me Assistant Chief David McGlamry from the Bristol, Tennessee Fire Department and we are both certified child passenger safety technicians. Motor vehicle accidents are the leading cause of death among children and adolescents. Many injuries and deaths occur as a result of misuse of car seats, booster seats, and seatbelts. The purpose of Child Passenger Safety Week is to highlight the importance of ensuring that children are properly secured in the appropriate car seat or seatbelt. Our community is incredibly lucky to have many wonderful partners working together to help save lives and prevent injuries every day through education about the proper use of car seats, seatbelts, and booster seats. These partners include Nysonger Children's Hospital, Safe Kids Coalition, the Bristol, Virginia Fire Department, the Bristol, Tennessee Fire Department, the YWCA, and Bristol's Promise. We appreciate your consideration of the proclamation presented to you today and we urge all parents and caregivers to attend a car seat check event or to reach out to their local fire department to schedule a car seat inspection with a certified child passenger safety technician.
Thank you very much. Nobody signed up for public comment for this item. The next is the reading of the proclamation. A proclamation designating Child Passenger Safety Week. Whereas children are our future and it is the responsibility of parents and caregivers, caregivers to keep America's children safe and whereas car seats are required by law for children traveling in motor vehicles and whereas, research analyzed by Cincinnati's Children's Hospital Medical Center show that in the U.S., only one in four child car seats are properly installed. And whereas, research shows when installed and used correctly, child safety seats decrease the risk of a fatal injury by seventy-one percent among infants, fifty-four percent among toddlers, and forty-five percent among children ages four to eight. And whereas, parents and guardians must make sure that children twelve and under, always riding the backseat, buckled up in properly installed child safety seats and a rear-facing child seat should never be placed in the front seat of a motor vehicle equipped with a passenger airbag. And whereas Bristol, Tennessee and Virginia encourage parents and caregivers to implement best practices for traveling safely with children. And whereas, the fire departments and public safety officers of the cities of Bristol, Tennessee, and Virginia work closely with partners and safety advocates such as Buckle Up for Life to help make the kind of choices that will keep children alive and safe. And whereas, children riding in the right seat for their age and size can be accomplished by a car seat inspection that ensures the safety of a child while traveling. Therefore, be it resolved that the mayors of Bristol, Tennessee and Virginia do hereby proclaim the week of September nineteenth through twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-one as Child Passenger Safety Week and the day of September twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one as Buckle Up for Life Day. We encourage all citizens to help reduce injuries and the tragic loss of life by buckling up themselves and their children every trip, every time. Now we're looking for a motion and a second from the council.
I move for the approval of the proclamation as presented.
Second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any council discussion?
Just very briefly, thank you, thank you all for coming tonight and talking about this. I know this is a, this is a major issue that, you know, saves a lot of lives, proper installation of safety seats. You know, it's not been that long ago that, you know, I'm thirty-three, I can remember riding in the, on the armrest in the front seat of the car on the interstate, you know, and, you know, stuff was incredibly dangerous back then and now we have the tools available to help save children and help keep them safe and, you know, as long as we use them appropriately, you know, those tools will do a lot of good. So, so thank you all for helping people install them, for pushing the information and, and for coming here tonight to talk to us about it.
We have a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, clerk, please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Knave?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Farnum?
Yes.
alternatives project for the construction of the Lee Highway Sidewalk Improvement. Staff report.
This is kind of just an overview of this sidewalk projects that we're looking at. The, on that sketch, which I guess it's a little difficult to see, on the, on the far right, it starts at, over hill and goes up to Clover and then from Clover to Shipley, those two sections are funded and they'll be going out for bid in the next year or so. We still have a little bit of work to do on those. And then the, the one that we're presenting tonight is, is the, I'm sorry, it's the number, the fifth one. And then, I'm sorry, the far end is the roundabout that's already been funded as well, but that's a couple of years down the road before that funding really comes through for us to start that. So if you go to the next sketch. So this one is, is the, there's approximately a thousand feet sidewalk and it's, it's ten feet except for a short piece at the end where it ties into, to Valley. It goes from Valley Drive to Jefferson and the center turn lane between Milsepp and Jefferson had to be removed to allow space for the sidewalk because we're kind of, basically, we're really are stuck between a rock and a hard place. There's a rock at the church that we don't want to mess with and on the other side, we've got a steep hill and so we're going to have to put a retaining wall in to allow the sidewalk to run up through there, but, but we're trying to keep it as a ten-foot walkway so that people have, so that we, ultimately, we would like to connect from downtown to Sugar Hollow Park with a ten-foot path. We already have the two sections out on Lee Highway that we just improved and so that, that's our ultimate goal. The, the funding for this thing is through Transportation Alternatives, which is a federal set aside program. There's a twenty percent match that's required and we're going to go with CBDG funding to provide that twenty percent match. The match, the estimate right now, which seems high, but it is, is what it, because retaining walls and just the work we're having to do there is one point two million. The, this, the, the share, the twenty percent share that's provided by the others is about two hundred and forty thousand. So are there any questions about what we've got here?
Can you, can you go back one slide to the, to the larger picture?
Yes.
So you said that you have the phase one and phase two covered and then?
They're funded.
And we're talking about phase five. Can you give us an update on three and four?
Three and four, there's nothing been done on those yet except they're just, there are the pieces in between. We felt like phase five was more important because it, a lot of people walk up and down that hill trying to go to the, the drugstores and so we, we felt like that area was, was a little more significant for us and so that's why we jumped over to that one.
Whereas three and four is just the, the part of Lee Highway that's completely flat and straight and has a little bit extra shoulder room?
Yes, that's correct.
I would agree with that. I drive through there a couple of times every day and, and I know phase five is probably the most challenging part?
Yes.
Of, of all of that because you don't have a lot of space on either side, so I'm glad to see that you're, you're able to do this and, you know, a couple of questions I had is just to make sure that this isn't like Smart Scale where they score them and rank them. This is just if we can make the match, the money.
Yeah, this is Transportation Alternatives. We, we went with that because it seemed, it was a little quicker in terms of getting the funding through because Smart Scale is usually five years out. This is a couple of years out, so it makes it a little quicker for us to get to it. And there was the CBDG funding that could make the match.
Okay.
Now, and I do need to say this too, estimates have, that we've done recently, the pricing has been very volatile. We, we, we submitted for a highway project and it came in twenty-five percent over the engineer's estimate and so we're going back to redesign that to try to lower that. So I say that to say it's, it's, it's real difficult to isolate these estimates. Five years ago, we were usually under our estimates. It's kind of reversed. It's, we're in a different period of time right now and so... It's, we're in a different period of time right now, and so I just, you know, want to put that out there too.
Well, I do have one more question, I think. So, you said that to, to do this phase five project, it would eliminate the turn lane between the, the two travel lanes, right?
I'm sorry, eliminate the?
It would eliminate the middle turn lane between the two travel lanes?
Yes, in, in a short section there, you'd still be able to make a left turn as you're heading towards downtown onto Milsep. There, it'd be, it'd be a little tight there at Millard, but, you know, if, if there's a lot, not a lot of traffic, you could do that. So, we would probably try to encourage, the only time you're really going to have it is the church, when they're, when they're having their services, and so we would probably try to encourage them to use Milsep. We're trying not to get into that cliff in front of the church, because we don't, we don't want to create the vibration that you'd have to if you had to take a, a rock hammer and start pounding away at that. None of the neighbors would like that. We're going to, we're going to have some of that just to get some storm pipe in, but we want to try to avoid widening that section through there, just because we don't know what we're going to open up.
So, just to follow back up on the, on the turn lane portion, so the only time that really there's a lot of traffic, you think, that warrants a turn lane is, is during church time?
Yes.
Okay. Because it's, so it's not going to, it'll probably act as a natural traffic control device to slow people down, because all of a sudden, they're, they're face to face with the cars, but you don't think it'll cause any backups as far as actual traffic?
No, that, with, I think, we, we looked at some of the traffic numbers, and we, we discussed that with the traffic, with Jay, who's more, is familiar with that traffic, and Melanie, and it, we just found that it was, traffic levels were not up to what we felt like would create problems for us.
So, the turn lane will still be there, like, say, when you get in front of JR's Market?
Yes, that's, that's correct. From Jefferson down, you'll have a full turn lane.
And you don't anticipate if, if you continue the, like, I'm going to say, I guess it's phase six, when you continue down, you don't anticipate that being a, being a problem?
No, we, we, if, if you look at that other sketch, it shows the, it shows the continuation. Now, we get a little close to the road with, with some of that sidewalk in there, but it's still, we won't have to make any adjustments to that center turn lane. It's just this one piece.
Okay, thank you.
One other question. You show here the phase on that map, it goes across the intersection, Lee Highway and Valley Drive, so would you, would crosswalks and signalization or anything be a part of this?
You, yeah, we should, we would probably go in there and put pedestrian heads as, as, when we did phase five, I'm sorry, phase four, when we do phase four, we'll probably put a pedestrian head there just to give people access across the street. And we may put it across to, across Lee over, between the CBS, we may put it at the full intersection. We'll just have to look and see when we get there.
Yeah, okay.
I would just make one comment. In conversations with Mr. Wingard this morning, he would like for us to look at different alternatives to potentially reduce that cost, and I can go over those with you?
Okay.
At a later date.
Thank you. Nobody signed up for public comment for this item. Next is reading of the resolution. Mr. Eads, would you like to?
Yes.
Do that for us?
Transportation Alternatives Project Endorsement Resolution, Lee Highway Sidewalk Phase Five, Valley Drive to Jefferson Drive. Whereas, in accordance with the Commonwealth Transportation Board Construction Allocation Procedures, it is necessary that a resolution be received from the sponsoring local jurisdiction or agency requesting the Virginia Department of Transportation to establish a transportation alternatives project in the city of Bristol. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the city requests the Commonwealth Transportation Board to establish a project for the construction of Lee Highway Sidewalk Phase Five, a sidewalk and necessary improvements on Lee Highway from Valley Drive to Jefferson Drive. Be it further resolved that the city hereby agrees to provide a minimum twenty percent matching contribution for this project, be it further resolved that the city hereby agrees to enter into a project administration agreement with VDOT and provide the necessary oversight to ensure the project is developed in accordance with all state and federal requirements for design, right-of-way acquisition, and construction of a federally funded transportation project. Be it further resolved that the city will be responsible for maintenance and operating costs of any facility constructed with Transportation Alternatives Program funds unless other arrangements have been made with VDOT. Be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Bristol hereby grants authority for the city manager to apply funds and execute project administration agreements, as well as other documents necessary for this project, passed and adopted by the City Council of the City of Bristol, Virginia at a regularly scheduled meeting of said council on the fourteenth day of September, two thousand twenty-one.
Thank you. What's the pleasure of the council?
I move for the approval of the resolution as presented.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any more council discussion?
Just glad to see this moved forward. We talk about sidewalks and especially CDBG funding, these road projects, and two areas that always keep coming up are Lee Highway and King Mill Pike, and you always see people walking along both of those. Both are very narrow, and this is, this phase here is probably the narrowest along Lee Highway, so if you can, the quicker we can fix that, it, you know, the other areas, people at least have a little extra room they can get out of the way, but this section's really difficult for people walking, so.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with that. I think we should, I've had a policy since I've been on here, and I think we have all been in agreement that we need to be a much more walkable city, and a city that makes it easier for people who might not have cars or might just not want to use cars to get around, you know, whether that be public transportation or whether that be, you know, sidewalks. So, I think this is a very good worthwhile project for us to be getting into, and I think that the use of the CDBG funds to be able to pay for it is a, is a fiscally responsible way to do it, so that's excellent. So, I'm all, I'm all for it.
I just wanted to say thank you for your work on this, and just to kind of reiterate what you said, the big picture, the goal of connecting Sugar Hollow Park and downtown, which is really the northern and the southern ends of our cities. I think that's a neat idea. Some of the, you know, cities I've visited, it seems like the ones that are really great, it's very easy to get around, and not just by a car, by walking or on a bike. It seems like cities that do that well, it seems like it's very planned out. So, I know this is a process going through different phases, but I appreciate you working on this, especially as we talk about the need for more sidewalks and crosswalks, and as we, as we look ahead, and we have growth, and we have visitors coming in, we want to make sure it's easy for them to get around. So, thank you for that. If there's no other further council discussion, we have a motion by Mr. Osborne, a second by Mr. Hartley. Clerk, please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Naev?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Farnum?
Yes.
The next item on the agenda is landfill discussion. Staff report.
Counsel, we have Ernie Hope here with Draper Aiden to give us an landfill update as to what's been happening over the past few weeks.
Members of council, good evening. Thank you for inviting me to speak to you tonight. The update on landfill has, as you've heard and been very involved throughout this whole process, is, is really at a pivotal point right now. So, the well drilling had in, was scheduled to start last Friday, which it did, and unfortunately, they did have a breakdown on the drill rig itself. We did get down to seventy feet of depth. The goal is a hundred and twenty feet per well. At seventy feet, the waste was somewhat what we expected. It was very wet, so that is part of what these wells will do, as I spoke earlier to a group of residents. It'll, it'll take the water out of this landfill and help to slow down the decomposition, and then draw out the odors and the gas from it. There's a total of seventeen that are planned. The plan is to do one every day. The well will be drilled. Typically, it appears it will get to depth probably in the one or two o'clock in the afternoon range. The well then gets constructed, stone gets put in, a pipe goes in it, it gets capped back up. There's actually even a foam plug that goes into it so that odors don't come back up that well. The well is capped and within it, with a port on top of it, so we can actually test the odors or gas that are, it starts to generate in that well. Again, seventeen days, that puts us somewhere early October. We're working six days a week, including Saturdays, so it's Monday through Saturday schedule. The landfill is, we'll have staff on hand to help with that operation, as well as folks from Draper Aiden and, and apted well drillers. Once these are connected, as I explained a little bit earlier, they will be connected to the active system where this gas and odors will be drawn out, brought to the flare, and brought to the power plant or in Janko's plant. We have every confidence that this will alleviate the problems. That being said, there still may be a need for more wells. It is a very large landfill, and what, where the challenge is, is to be able to get enough coverage. I think as mayor, you had asked the question earlier about how we do that, but it is, it is a cell system, but the environment in a landfill is imperfect. It's not a homogeneous mass, it's mixture of everything. So, there's layers that, that can, gas can go through, and there's layers that can't go through, there's layers of water can penetrate, and so on. So, the goal is to be able to have enough coverage in that landfill to do that, and then to plan for the future. As additional waste is put in, gas wells will have to be added, system needs to be continually maintained. The maintenance is a big piece of it, too. Part of the appropriation that you did for additional workers at the landfill is critical to make sure that there are enough bodies there that can move the soil for the cover, that can manage and, and maintain the gas system. So, it is an ongoing process, and it's a process that if, once we get caught up with it, once we, we have gotten over the, the worst of it, really, and that's part of that construction, you will begin to see the odors abate, and we can get back into more normal operations is the expectation within, within some short order. Not to say that there won't be more bumps in the road, there have been already, but we're prepared to keep adjusting for those and work as quickly as we can to, to eliminate this odor, and, you know, what all the citizens are experiencing out there will, will be abated. And really with that, if, any specific questions that I can answer for you?
So, it said probably first of October, you'll be done drilling wells.
If, if we, if we can do one a day, it puts us about October fourth, I believe.
And then to hook it up, so, I don't know what, that's a couple of weeks, probably?
Probably could be a couple of months by the time it's completely hooked up. Really, what we have to really ascertain is the, the amount of gas we have at each of these wells, so some of it's unknown. So, even the construction of the system itself, some of it's almost an as-built as we're doing it. So, and then, you know, there's just different, different things that we're going to find that we have to be able to react to, which I alluded to earlier to, to the public.
So, I mean, when can residents expect to, to, when will y'all kind of have a sense that this is making a difference, when will the residents?
Really, once the wells are hooked up, yeah, once the wells are hooked up, probably, we're probably looking at, you know, thirty to forty-five days after the last well's in, the system should be fully connected.
And then, you didn't mention it here, of course, I know drilling the wells is the first priority, but we appropriated the funds for the odor neutralization system. When, when will that be installed?
So, there's a, the way that's happening is really in two pieces. The first is really a pilot to see really how effective it is. So, the pilot will begin week from, two weeks from yesterday, so in two weeks essentially. And the pilot's going to consist of two or three areas of landfill that we've going to designate to test. The way the test is going to be done is there's going to be an air sampling done at the site where the neutralizer is put, and the neutralizer will be in place for most likely thirty days is the period we're looking at. And then after that, we will test that area again and really try to determine how effective it was in that relatively small area. Once that is concluded, and then really at the same time, once the gas wells have been put in place, we can determine really where there's odors left. One of the things, one of the other steps that I actually didn't speak about, kind of the next steps, so a next step would be, once the cover is in place and wells are in place, is to really then identify any other weaknesses in the cover. Cover, you've heard a lot about the cover. Well, what we will be able to do is then really try to find any places that there are any other leaks, and to try to close those off. Sometimes there's leaks around gas wells, that's typically where you'll see them, but there could be leaks along the walls in this quarry, and so once we identify where they are, we will go to those areas. We can mitigate the odors with some of this treatment potentially, but even more priority would be, can we block those off? Once we give the gas a place to go, we can work on blocking off some of the other places we don't want it to go.
You mentioned next steps. I, I know before you talked about the, the leach aid. Is that the next step as well, once, I mean, after you kind of deal with the wells and, and all that, and the gas, then looking at the, the leach aid as well?
And the leach aid is going on simultaneously. We haven't put any specific plans in place, but we are in, in really the design and discussions stage with BVU about how to get those levels of primarily benzene to a lower level that's acceptable to them. That will involve some upgrades to the wet well area, which is, the wet well is essentially the pumping area where the leach aid ingredient goes in. There's some repairs that need to be done in that wet well. Once those repairs are done, the next piece would be to have a piece of equipment that would take the benzene out of the water before it goes down to the wastewater treatment plant. We are in the early stages of some design on that. We are still trying to make sure that we have the correct calculations of the volume of water. That is one of the, it's kind of a chicken and egg problem we're working on to, to work on getting the wet well repaired, at the same time, try to design a system that will get the benzene out.
Thank you.
So, I had a couple of questions for you. One, one question I was going to ask, you, you mentioned the subject briefly, is Engenco?
Yes.
So, I think there's been, there's been a lot of confusion that I've seen and heard about what Engenco's role is and what they're doing. So, could you kind of address a little bit what Engenco, what part Engenco is playing in our landfill, and feeding off of that, will they see an increase in gas that they're receiving from these wells, and, and how will that affect it, and maybe tie that in with how we burn off whatever excess we have?
Sure. And I didn't cover that specifically tonight. I think I had mentioned before, one of the things to put this in perspective, and this might be actually a good fact for, for people to consider, we've, I've said this before, but your landfill in two thousand twenty generated about two hundred and fifty cubic feet per minute of gas. That's what it was generating. At the highest, we were able to get it recently through some of the improvements, short-term improvements. We've gotten it to five hundred, so we've doubled it. The estimate for this landfill could be anywhere as between a thousand and fifteen hundred CFN is what it's capable of generating based on a mathematical calculation of the total waste and waste and gas generation for that much waste. So, we're a long ways away from that, and the goal is always to capture a hundred percent. Most landfills capture close to it, but there's, there's always some, but we want to get close to that. The landfill has two options. It can flare and operate a flare twenty-four, seven, and it would be in complete compliance. Or it can bring in a company like Engenco that would use the methane to generate power. The city made that arrangement many years ago with Engenco. In fact, Engenco's anticipation back then was that the gas generation would be in that fifteen hundred range, or at least a thousand range. And, and to show that, Engenco has the, their, their plant that they built there has the ability to have eighteen engines work. They have typically only run two to four engines. So, that just gives you a sense of the scale of how far we are from really what the projection was early on. Engenco made this investment based on their assumption also that there would be this much gas to capture. So, what Engenco does is really, it's the alternate to the flare. The benefit is it's generating electricity. So, we're ta, you're taking that energy from the landfill, and you're really creating green energy through the landfill, which generates, you know, generates some income also back to the city that gets, right now, you get very little income. You've gotten very little income from it because the volume was so small. If the volume can get larger, you can gain some more income for it, and that money can help offset or help you with some of your other expenses. So, having a plant like Engenco really is the ideal scenario. I mean, the only thing better than that- I mean, the only thing better than that would be if you had a direct user that could use the methane, but to create electricity from this methane is really a preferred method if it can be done. And as was asked, you know, they are under very strict, their, your air permit for that landfill, it's under a Title V that you have, Injenco's part of that air permit, and they also have pretty strict requirements on monitoring the air in their stacks as well.
I appreciate that, and I, I think I, I agree with you obviously that, you know, the more gas that we can, you know, feed into Injenco or feed into some, you know, situation like that, you know, we're, we're looking for an environmentally friendly option to get rid of it, so, you know, I, I don't even care necessarily, you know, about whatever kind of profits we're, we're generating from them. It's nice to have them, but, but it's better to, you know, do what's environmentally friendly with that methane that we have to get rid of some way. My next question goes back to the, to the odor neutralizer. I've had people ask me, you know, for lack of a better term, is this, is this a big Febreeze machine that's, that's blowing, you know, something smells good into the air? So could you kind of explain how, you know, it's not, it's not an air freshener, it's a neutralizer, and how it will neutralize these smells, and, and more importantly to that question, what is in the neutralizer that's neutralizing the smells?
So it is an essential oils product, essentially is what it is. It's, it's, it's really a natural product. The manufacturers of it claim you could drink it. It, you know, it's a completely non-hazardous substance. We do have MSDF sheets on it that are available, and that is something we can provide to you or provide to the public if they have questions. Essentially what it's doing is it's, it's, it's attaching itself to these VOCs, you've heard a lot about, VOCs are volatile organic chemicals. They, they're various substances that are producing this odor, so they attach themselves to this chemicals at a molecular level, and, and essentially, they don't, they don't cover it up, they actually drop it out of the air. What they're doing is they're attaching it to it, to it, and they actually fall out. So they're not destroying them, but what they're doing is they're taking them out of the air is what they're doing. In the test program that we're going to be doing, it is going to be more of a vapor program. Long-term, what would happen is if we get into a more permanent situation, it would be a different vaporizing system that would really get the vapor to very small particles, again, to try to attach itself to these odors that are in the, in the air. What I will have for you after this pilot is, is done is really a full report and, and a full explanation really of the science of how this is all working so that, so that you can see it, and also the residents can see that as well as what happened.
Are there any examples of other landfills that have used this specific product successfully?
So the landfill that comes to mind is there's a landfill in Lynchburg that has used this. They had an odor problem, they had an odor mitigation plan put in, much like yours. They went through a similar process where they had to increase cover, add additional gas, gas infrastructure, and then added this system to their, basically their toolbox. It's, it's not a panacea, this isn't going to make all the odors go away, and if we didn't, if we did just this, it wouldn't work. But this is really something that, that is part of the solution and has proven, and, you know, in talking to the environmental director down there, has, has shown some positive results, and the neighbors that are closest to it, you know, feel that it has helped. Now, that being said, again, it's, it's a little bit of this and a little bit of that, and it's, it's a lot of really getting the gas collection to work. I mean, without that, none of this works. This system ultimately would be, see, it's not, it's not something we could just spray across the whole landfill, but we have to find isolated areas. So typically, as I mentioned earlier, it's used on a working face where there's some odors that come up in very small concentrated areas, and, and that's what we'll look at. Are there specific areas that it could be employed temporarily, or are there areas that would be used on a regular basis in the future? So that's all to, really to be determined.
Thank you. The next thing I'll say, it's not really a question, just a, just a general thought that I've had. You know, I know that, that people out there want this landfill closed, you know, as, as quickly and expeditiously as possible, and, you know, we're kind of, you know, between a rock and a hard place on that because we have tens of millions of dollars of debt associated with this landfill to, to got it off the ground and operate it, and, you know, that's the kind of thing that if this shuts down too quickly, it becomes an undue burden on our taxpayers. So, so I understand that we have to find a way to, yes, shut it down, you know, faster maybe than we had planned on originally, you know, maybe not 30 years, maybe we can do it sooner than that obviously, but we need to find a way to do that, but we also need to find a way to, in the meantime, have the landfill be fully, you know, safe and not a, not a burden on people's lives, and, you know, coming and smelling up their yard, basically. So, so I appreciate all the work that you all have been doing for the past several months and that you will be doing for the next several months, and undetermined amount of time to try and, try and get us to where we need to be, because we can't let it go on like this, and I appreciate your work. I think the people of the, of the City of Bristol, Virginia, and Tennessee appreciate, you know, we're trying everything we can, and you all are, you know, doing your best, and, you know, I just, I do appreciate it. I, you know, I've, I've done some research, and I hope that these wells work. From what I've seen, I have a good feeling about it, but I'm not qualified like you are, so we, so that's, whenever we have any kind of issue, we want to listen to the experts, and, and we appreciate having expert guidance on this.
Well, I just, I just had one question. I, I wanted to start by saying thank you for coming here, working on this, updating us, because I know you, you don't live here, you travel in, and, and I'm sure, you know, you, we field some, some tough questions, we give you some, and I'm sure you always enjoy coming in here. Sometimes it's probably like walking into a firing squad a little bit, but, you know, this is a, it's an issue that, that's affecting everybody, you know, myself included. I think I've mentioned before, I live pretty close by to the landfill, and, you know, it, it's a sensitive issue, and emotion, emotions are running high, especially just all throughout the community. I mean, so we appreciate everyone's patience while the work is being done, but, but my question is really, you know, on, on this side of it here, you know, we're asked, our job up here, to, to handle the, the taxpayer dollars, and we, we vote on our budgets, and we've asked, we've been asked to vote twice on approving additional money for the work that's being done, so that, that's sort of, and we've done that. I guess my question is, for what's going on right now, is there anything that can be done to expedite the process? And maybe, I don't know, is it, is it funding that, that's on us up here for, for something like, for staffing or for overtime? You know, you mentioned the goal is to drill a well a day. Can you drill two wells a day? I mean, and then the process of hooking everything up. I know it needs to be done the right way, but I think what I'm hearing from citizens is how quickly can it get done? So that's sort of, that's sort of what leads into my question about the process, the timing, and, and anything else we can do to make it happen faster.
Well, yeah, and I could appreciate that, and, you know, I appreciate really all the citizens and residents that are faced with this. I completely understand. This is not what a landfill is supposed to be like. You know, we deal with landfills across the Commonwealth and multiple states, and, and a well-operating landfill is not going to give this smell. It is going to be environmentally friendly, or as friendly as it possibly can be. We've come a long way environmentally on landfills, and there's a lot of misconception of what they are. The old picture of a landfill and what a modern landfill are very different, and Bristol really is not emblematic of what they are. So we're going to get this fixed, the science is behind it, the wells will work. Council does have a big role. Financing is going to be a challenge, and it already has, and I know you already have reached down several times to pay for this. So the, the expense is going to continue, there will potentially be more wells, there's a lot of cost in maintaining this, and that is also the challenge going forward. As I mentioned, in 2016, you put wells in, they probably worked pretty well for a couple of years, but budgets get tight, and where can we cut? This is not something you can cut, this is something you really have to, you fund this. With that being said, the speed at which we're doing it right now, really one well at a time, you know, as we, I talked about earlier, we are learning about the landfill because there's no way to know what's going on underneath a landfill, especially this landfill, because there's no way to get into it other than to drill the way we're drilling. So each well is telling us a story, and we're kind of mapping this story out with a number of engineers that we're talking with on a daily basis to, to, to come up with the best solution. So we may need another well over here that we didn't anticipate, or we may need to go a little deeper, or we'll get these wells in and we'll come back to you and say, you know, we need four more. The speed at which we're doing it, one well a day, is really part of the environment that we're working in. This is a very tough environment even for a landfill because of how dense the trash is. So, you know, I think we're moving as fast as we can. Sure, I wish we were, would have been drilling two months ago if we could have gotten that together, but there was still a lot to go into that. Just to give you an idea, for example, when we drill 120 feet down into the trash, we have to make sure that we're enough distance from the bottom of the landfill, we don't want to drill right through the liner. So we have to constantly measure and survey and know the depths that we go to, so there is a lot to this, and I think everybody's working as quickly as they can, and, and I think you'll see results relatively quickly as soon as we can get these, these pipes
Becky, if you're on the phone, can you hear us with, or have any questions for us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. I'll, I'll just, I have some of the, had some of the same questions that have already been asked, and I'll just add, thank you for that update. You know, I'm getting the same questions from our citizens and concerns, and have some of the same concerns that have been addressed tonight, and I just want to also say that, you know, we are working as far as the council and the city as quickly as we can to eliminate these issues, and we want to make sure our citizens, our family, our children and grandchildren are living in a safe odor-free environment, and I just want to say, and want, want everyone to know that we are taking it very seriously. I know there's a lot of comments made a lot of times that we're not, you know, taking it very seriously, but we are, we're concerned about it, and it's at the top of all of our list, and so thank you to all the citizens who share their feelings with us regarding the landfill, and just know that we're experiencing this with you, and we're working as hard as we can to make our city odor-free and continue to be a safe environment.
Thank you again, Ernie, for coming and speaking with us now, and also speaking with us before the meeting, the meeting we had earlier.
Anytime.
All right.
Thank you.
If there's no, no further discussion, the next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. What's the pleasure of the council?
I move for approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Naif?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Farnum?
Yes.
Okay, that's the end of our agenda. If there's no further business, we stand adjourned.